I like that pantsuit, though. I like that pantsuit, though. I've got some of those. But mine.
I mean, those pants are from there, so why?
Oh, no, I want one, too. My cats, I had none on the lower rack in my closet, and my cats climbed up on me. The shoulders of a bunch of them. Councilman Alexander says it's six o'clock right on the money. Time to call this meeting to order. And before we begin the meeting tonight, I do want to say that Tuba Christmas is at seven o'clock. Particularly if you're watching this online or on television, you might choose to be elsewhere and enjoy Tuba Christmas at First Baptist Church. If not, you're certainly welcome to join the festivities there after this meeting concludes. But we'll begin the meeting tonight, like we do each meeting, with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Alexander's going to lead us in the invocation. Councilman Camp is going to lead us in the pledge. If you would stand, please.
In every heart pray. Turn of grace to God, once again, we come with thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you, dear Lord, for this blessed day. We thank you for this council and all that stands forth. We pray of God that let everything we say, everything we do, be pleased in your sight. In Jesus' name I do pray in every heart set.
Amen.
Please place the flag. Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, Ms. Cottrell, if you'd call the roll for us, please. Vice Mayor Overton.
Present.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Mr. Camp.
Present.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
Mr. Mayberry.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum. Thank you. Before you have the meetings, from the September 19th, 2017, meeting, the October 3rd, 2017, meeting, and the October 17th, 2017.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of all three sets of minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? Ms. Love?
The minutes for the 19th, on page four, the second paragraph said, "And no certified mailings have not been accepted," or assigned for. I think that means have been accepted.
None have been.
And then, on the fourth paragraph down, I believe it should say, "Made motion to demolish" instead of to demolition. Then, on the other set of minutes, on page six, it says, line number 16, it says, "Councilman Mayberry presented this resolution, appointing time weekly." I think that was 10.
Uh-huh.
That's all.
Wonderful proofreader among us, and we are appreciative. So, motion and second, those corrections noted. Any other changes, additions? All in favor of approving all three sets of minutes, please say aye. Opposed? They do all pass. Next, we welcome from our Gallatin Department of Electricity, Mr. Mark Kimball, who is the manager, and he's going to be presenting his annual report to us. And he said it was quickly, so those of you who are here observing the meeting, don't be in fear.
Just a few things. I'll hit some highlights for Gallatin Department of Electricity, and then we'll talk about the financial report from Denny and Cantrell. This past year, we, Gallatin Department of Electricity has added 607 new customers, which represents a growth of 3.37 percent. Gallatin is the fastest growing among, the second fastest growing among all electric systems in middle Tennessee. Now, we had 19 systems. Our total customer count is 18,588. Last month, our customer count was 18,799, so we continue to grow. For the latest rolling year, Gallatin added over 700 customers. So, we broke the all-time record this past month of the amount of customers in our rolling year that we've increased in the past rolling year. TVA this past year increased our rates 1.5 percent. Gallatin passed that on to the customers. We did not have an increase at Gallatin Department of Electricity, other than the TVA increase. We operate on about six to seven cents out of every dollar that we take in, so most of it goes back to pay the TVA bill. Some of that goes to the city for our taxes. Gallatin operates, Gallatin has 563 customers per employee, which is a significant number because Gallatin is fifth among all TVA systems as far as the high customer count per employee. That means we do more with less. Gallatin completed its 31st straight year without outstanding debt. All operations and capital needs are funded by cash generated from our daily operations. Our major capital additions include year two of our streetlight program, where we're replacing all of the lights with LEDs. This is a good thing because it's going to save the city in electric usage and lower the maintenance time and expense for Gallatin as far as maintenance on the lights. We also completed a 161 to 69 KV substation addition, where we added a big power transformer at Donnelley, where the Donnelley Printing Plant used to be, right at that substation. Construction is underway, well underway, at the new substation in the industrial park, and that should be finished sometime January of '18, so if we can get some help, we're getting a big load out there, we'd appreciate that, and looking forward to that. We put that transformer there, that station there, so we can serve any, hopefully any load that we bring into the industrial park. We replaced one big red bucket truck this past year. In our future plans, we're about to let our fiber project, so you'll be seeing crews around the area installing fiber for a couple of loops around town. That will be the start of our metering project, our automated metering project, and those are some of the exciting things that we have going on at Gallatin Department of Electricity. You should have the auditor's report, and I always like to go to one of the first pages, the opening letter on page III. And if you go down in opinions, it says, just a couple of highlights. "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the business type activities of Gallatin Department of Electricity." That just says they agree with what we gave them, as far as the information. And then, if you go back towards the back, on page 37, down the last paragraph under internal controls, it says, the second to last sentence, it says, "Given these limitations during our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses." And then, the last, start of the last sentence on page 37, "The results of our test disclosed no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards." So, we had a clean audit. Any questions?
Just compliments.
Thank you.
When you said something about the lighting being changed to LEDs, is that also going to include security lights?
We'll get through the streetlight lighting project, and then we'll gradually start doing the security lights. Is now, if we need to replace one or something along that lines, we've gotten our rate approved by TVA, which we have to have done before we can install any of those lights, but that's done, so we'll start gradually replacing those lights. But we won't do it wholesale until we get to the end of the streetlight project. Anything else?
Excellent report, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball.
I'll be back next year. Thank you.
And high compliments to Gallatin Department of Electricity and your staff. Now is the time of the meeting where we have public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time where, if you have an item on the agenda that concerns you, you may address it before the council. We ask that you come forward to the podium, introduce, give us your name and your address, and then you may speak to the item of concern. We ask that you do limit your comments to five minutes, and we will now say that public recognition on agenda-related items is open, and you may come forward.
My name's Joe Matthews, 605 Harris Lane, Gallatin, Tennessee. I know the majority of the council members. It's good to see you, Mayor. It's good to see you.
Regarding what item? Did you want to ask about an item?
Yes, I want to ask about the item, make sure it's still on the agenda. It's the 308 home development.
Kensington.
Long Halle Pike at Harris Lane, Greenlee area. Is that still on our agenda?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. Short and sweet, I hope. As far as the project itself, as far as having a residential community coming into that location, it's much, much better than having another set of apartment complexes coming in. So, we have, the developer of this project has been very nice, very polite, has come and met on more and more than one occasions with the citizens in that area in order to listen to their concerns, needs, and then try to make adjustments. My understanding is, we was, and hopefully it will be back, the traffic study will be available tonight, if y'all already have it, reference the traffic impact on the area. Last meeting we had with Ms. Michelle at her house, it was discussed that one entrance into and out of the development off of Greenlee, currently it was proposed as two, one coming off Greenlee, the other one coming off Long Halle Pike. And because of the historic house that the property is adjacent to, again, the developer's been very nice in working, and they have come to the agreement, if the council will approve, that not to put in that second entrance and go into Long Halle Pike. There are several factors around not doing that. One, it preserves the area intact. There's also a bird sanctuary that is attached, adjacent to that property that Mr. Maddox owns, that's overseen by TWRA. You've got the historic home there, you've got a historic home across the street behind my house on Harris Lane. So, if, our main concern was if we cannot have that section going from Long Halle Pike into the subdivision, that that would preserve that area, again, depending on the traffic study and what can be done. Other residents here in Southern County, as far as development, Twin Eagles, it has one entrance to their homes, been that way for years, has operated very well if traffic come in and out, and they are only coming out of their subdivision onto a two-lane Highway 25. Now that the city of Gallatin put in that nice five-lane highway there on Greenlee, then this development would have five lanes that it would come to and come out, so it should be sufficient. Again, I haven't seen the study, but it should be sufficient to handle the traffic flow. So, that's what I'm here tonight, the projects ago. You've got some good developers and engineers that are assisting with that, and the residents do not have a problem with the development as a whole. It's just the logistics and the traffic, and they were very, very concerned about that second entrance to Long Halle Pike, and request the council to allow the developer and the citizens not to have that second entrance to Long Halle Pike. So, that's my short and sweet, and I'll sit down, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items? Should come forward at this time. Okay, I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I will declare that public recognition on agenda-related items is closed, which brings us now to Mayor's comments. I'm going to begin my comments this evening with a couple of important recognitions, and so I'm going to start by asking Ms. Jamie Ann Hannah to join me at the podium. I wanted you all to know, and some of you may have heard this, I think we actually included it, but I wanted to bring her here and recognize her before you all, but Jamie Ann was recently selected as the Public Risk Manager of the, that's hard to say, the Public Risk Manager of the Year for 2017 by the Tennessee Public Risk Management Association. This was nominees from throughout the state, and some of the criteria for judging, including risk managers who developed and implemented a program to overcome a risk management challenge faced by an entity, or utilize various insurance or self-funding mechanisms to create an effective risk financing scheme, who developed, implemented, and administered loss prevention and loss control programs to eliminate or reduce the risk exposures of the entity, coordinated support systems that best serve the entity's risk management goals and needs, and serves as a mentor and leader within the industry to help others develop quality risk management programs. You all recall that several years ago, we made Jamie Ann our official risk manager, and since that time, she has constantly been pushing us to improve processes and put guidelines, if you will, in place so that our city is better protected, our citizens are better protected, and our workers are better protected. And through all that she has done, I think it's very, very important to us all to realize that she's done such a great job, that she's already been recognized by the state of Tennessee as the best in the state out of how many cities? How many, how many cities are in that organization?
Well, it's statewide, so I don't know how many members that we have, over 200, so.
So, over 200 cities. And so, I want to show you the beautiful award that she received for that honor, and I would like to ask that you all recognize her at this time.
I just want to say that I really love this city. I like working here. I've worked for this city right out of college, and it's near and dear to my heart, and I have a great boss that I work with as well. Most important thing is that our employees come home at the end of the day, safe to their families, so, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job.
At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Ben Harris and Mr. Billy Burns and their families to come forward. I guess we could do these one at a time, or we can do them all together. What do y'all feel like? Recently, we had two of our devoted fire personnel who willingly made the transition to our building department. These are both gentlemen that have given selflessly as firefighters, later as inspectors, and have contributed in the community, have been very, very vested in this community. It means a lot to them, and while I think firefighting was very near and dear to their hearts, they also saw the, and I hate to put words in your mouth, but I am, but I think they also saw the value in fire prevention, and have chosen to continue their work by helping protect our city in a new and different way. And so, we're delighted now to have them in the building department, but we wanted to recognize them for their years of service to the Gallatin Fire Department. So, I have some plaques for presentations. Should we do, council, do y'all want to do that, so we could do a group picture with them, maybe do one at a time? Do y'all feel like getting up and walking to the steps?
I would.
Come on, let's do that. And we'll start with Mr. Billy Burns, and.
We can come over here. And this just says, "Certificate of recognition from the City of Gallatin, presented to Billy Burns in recognition of 20 years of dedicated service to the City of Gallatin Fire Department, with appreciation, respect, and gratitude for your service." To know that you are appreciated, and so glad that you're still here with the city.
Thank you.
And thank you for allowing your husband to serve, because I know it's not easy for the families. So, if y'all want to come over here and have a photo with him. Y'all can see it. You should go over here, so we're not saying this. You're right. Yeah. Can I start with this one? All right. Ready? Got it? Thank you. Good job, really. Good job. Thank you. Very much.
And now, we're going to recognize Mr. Ben Harris. Says much the same. Certainly, I want to recognize the family as well for your support, in not just his fire endeavors, but also as county commissioner and all that else that you've done in the community. Now, you've been very valuable to your church, to the food bank, to the city, and on behalf, for the city, to the county, and representing us to the county, and we've appreciated that as much, too. Ben's also recently retired from the Southern County Commission, so we probably should be recognizing you for that as well. But this is for, presented to Benjamin Harris in recognition of 29 years of dedicated service to the City of Gallatin Fire Department, with appreciation, respect, and gratitude for your service, and we do appreciate you, and glad you're still here.
Stand up for my brother. Stand by your brother, man. Smile. Can you grab one real quick? Really? Give you fun. Thank you.
Ben or Billy, did y'all want to say anything? I forgot to offer that. Ben has one.
I'd like to thank the council. This means a great deal to myself, and I know it does, Billy. Fire prevention has become a passion for me. I think without Chuck Stewart's guidance and direction, we wouldn't have gotten this far along with our fire prevention as we have. Also, I'd like to give thanks to our past fire chief, Billy Crook. He was very instrumental in that also, and thank y'all again. Thank you.
He pretty much said it, too, that, you know, thank the council for having us, the award we got. Appreciate all y'all. Enjoyed my time at the fire hall, but I look going to the code, still doing the fire prevention. Ben led me that away, so I appreciate all y'all and Ben. Thank you.
It's nice when we get to hear from some of our employees. I think we all see how devoted so many are, and how this is certainly a job to them, but it's also a job that they put a lot of heart into, and we have so many people who care about what they do for our city, and we're very, very fortunate in that. So, thank you all for honoring these important folks to us tonight, and I have some calendar events that I'm going to share with you. I do want to mention, before I get into some of the calendar events, that Gallatin was deemed the fourth safest city in the state of Tennessee. Just got that news this week, and so we're very pleased with that. I don't remember the exact, it seems like it was Brentwood, Spring Hill, I forget who the third one was before us, but we'll take that. Good job, Gallatin Police Department. I mentioned that Tuba Christmas is happening tonight. Tomorrow, for those of you who, not tomorrow, but Thursday, is the Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. On this Saturday is the Gallatin Christmas Parade, but before the parade, at nine o'clock, is the Kids Elves Workshop at the Gallatin Civic Center. This Sunday night at the Palace Theater is a special performance by our local resident and very talented singer, Mr. John Berry. On Monday, the 11th, the Gallatin Fire Department is doing a holiday burpee challenge. That's going to be happening at 4:30, and they would love for you to come out, make a pledge, and help support some families in need that they are generously giving to this Christmas. The final thing, this is Duggar, and she's in charge of those pageants, and I'll actually be emceeing the Ms. Gallatin Pageant that evening. Reefs Across America is also on that day at 11:00 AM, and that's at the Gallatin City Cemetery. And on the 18th of December is Councilman Alexander's birthday. So, those are all my calendar mentions for right now, and this is our last, watch this, Councilman Hayes. This is our last council meeting before the Christmas holidays, so we certainly want to wish everyone a happy holiday season, and that's going to conclude my comments before we foray into the regular agenda. We, Councilman Alexander has asked that one item be moved up because he has to leave early, and that's item number nine. Is that okay with this council for us to do that?
Another question, too. Can we move item number 10 up? I mean, we don't have to move it to the top, but just try to move it before the fire truck and all that, to like item.
Let's do nine and 10. Okay, that's fine.
That's fine, because we got a lot of people here from the 10.
Everyone in agreement with that? All right. Item number nine is first reading on ordinance number 01711-94, and Councilman Alexander is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is first reading on ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, rezoning a 2.38 acre lot, tax map 1130, group N, parcel 002.04, from the R10 medium-density residential district to the R6 high-density residential district located at 599 West Eastern Street. Authorizing revision to be indicated on the official zoning ad list, repealing conflicting ordinance, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Now, so move. Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance number zero, oh, I'm sorry, 01711-94. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item 10 is the first reading on ordinance number 01711-96, and Councilman Hayes is recognized.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning portions of two parcels totaling approximately 76.47 acres from the MRO, multiple residential and office. PGC planned general commercial and the MU mixed-use zoning districts to the R8 medium-density residential planned residential development district, and approval of a preliminary master development plan for Kensington Downs, located south of Long Halle Pike and west of Greenlee Boulevard. Motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fennell, and that opens the floor for discussion.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
And it is about the entrances there. Mr. McCord, my understanding from folks at Freedom Church, is that Freedom Church Road is going to remain open for a right turn only on to Greenlee. Is that correct?
That's what the latest rendition of the modification that would be made to the master development plan, that that would be a, still retain as a public road, although they could go through the process of vacation, but it is in the right of way now, so there's really no need to do that. But there would be a modification of that road upon the extension of Freedom Church Road up to Kensington Boulevard, but that existing road would be converted to a right turn only to allow for southbound movements on Greenlee Boulevard. There would be no left turns into that driveway and no left turns out of that driveway, which is essentially a ramp-type configuration, is what's proposed. And I've talked with the city engineer about that as well, and he's comfortable with that.
So, off of Greenlee, there's two exits off of Greenlee, one entrance and two exits.
On to Greenlee, there would only be one right out only at the existing Freedom Church, I think it's Freedom Church Road.
That's right.
Connection, and then there would be a full access at Kensington Boulevard, and that'd be the only two.
That's correct. Okay. And what about the other end on Long Halle Pike?
Long Halle Pike would be a local street that would extend from Long Halle Pike into the development. It would include platted lots adjacent to the roadway on the south side of the creek, on up the hill. There's a little hill from the creek on up. So, there'd be a preserved landscaped area in that area. Now, the creek also has a flood zone associated with it, and of course, there'd be no development there.
So, the developer built a bridge across the creek, correct?
That's right.
Going up to Long Halle Pike.
And I think.
Wait, wait, wait. Is the, has the traffic study come back yet?
I have not seen it. We have preliminary trip generation estimates.
Just on that note right there, talking to the developer today, I think there's going to be some changes on that between now and our second reading, as far as that entrance in Long Halle Pike.
Do we want him to, do you want him to discuss that tonight?
I mean, he's, if he wants to come up here and tell us, but I don't think, I mean, I think it's, you know, a lot of it's going to depend on some stuff, so, I mean, that's, yeah. That's why I think, you know, we probably need to, if we want to, we can bring it back up. When's our next committee meeting?
Next committee meeting is next week, but then the second reading will be on the second.
Well, that's, if we want to bring it back up then, and let them, let them come back at the committee meeting, because by then, hopefully, they'll have something.
Should we ask the representatives if they feel like they should address something, address anything tonight?
Yeah.
I just know that they're here, and I don't want to take that opportunity from them.
No, it's fine. I mean, I don't think to go, they're not going to be a team more probably than what said.
Okay, I mean, or you can wait till the work session. I don't, I don't care. I'm just saying, here's the opportunity.
I would just like to hear their ideas. I mean, you've got several people out here that's coming on this project, and I'd just like to hear what they're planning on doing, so that, you know, we can address that. like to hear what they're planning on doing so that, you know, we can address that.
I'm Jim Harrison with Civil Site Design Group. Just to be very brief, we have had our traffic engineer look at the elimination of that connection and how that would affect the overall system and overall roadway network. Our initial feedback from the traffic is that everything operates adequately and everything operates appropriately. We're in the process right now of looking at future connections of where they would, where they would come in. If we eliminated that connection there along the side towards the historic house, and that is what we plan on documenting further as we, with the planning department and bringing that back to look at closer at the details. But we do have that intent to move forward in that matter. Does that make sense?
So, does this council want this on the next work session, or will, is this stuff being addressed at second reading?
We don't have, we don't have to.
We've been in for a long time. This, they've got to go through public reading.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Yeah, it's still got to go.
Public hearing is the second.
Yeah, so it's.
So, I just go ahead and get this done for these guys.
Yeah. Yeah, there's no sense in bringing it back up. I mean, because it'll, we do have public hearing. I forgot about that, and then we'll have to, so it'll be the second week.
I would like to see it done before public hearing, because these folks, no reason to bring them back up here, you know, for a work session. If they come back for a public hearing, then we can get our answers at public hearing.
But I think, I think realistically talking.
Between now, there's one work session next week, and then the public hearing will be on the 2nd of January, and then the second reading will actually be, what, 16?
I'd love to have it by the 2nd of January for that public hearing.
No, they're.
Because they want to know. I mean, you know, if we close it off, I think most of them will be happy, and so they want to know what their plans are, what we're going to do. So, that's just my input. So, I'd hopefully have it by that meet.
We will have that information.
Great.
Any further questions from this council? Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we have a motion and a second. With all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. We've completed items nine and 10 on the agenda, so we're going to go back to item number one, which is second reading on ordinance number 01710-85. And for that one, Councilwoman Love is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin rezoning a 2.89 plus or minus acre parcel from A agriculture residential district to R15 medium-density residential district, located on the south side of East Broadway and west of Martin Lane, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is second reading on ordinance number 01710-85. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item two is second reading on ordinance number 01710-86. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning a 5.67 acre portion of a parcel and 2.24 acre lot totaling 7.19 acres from the PNC Plan Neighborhood Commercial District to MRO, multiple residential and office district, and approving a preliminary master development plan for the Villas on the Greens on 13.06 acres. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fennell. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, this is the second reading, ordinance number 01710-86. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item three is second reading on ordinance number 01710-87, and Councilwoman Love is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance rezoning an approximately 75 plus or minus acre parcel from PBP, Planned Business Park, and PGC, Planned General Commercial Districts to R15 medium-density residential zoning district. From the, I think I've lost my place, PBP Planned Business Park District to R20 low-density residential zoning district, and from R15 medium-density residential to R20 low-density residential zoning district located south of Stag Bark Lane and west of Roundtree Drive, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman, I think, Fennell. Is that right? Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance number 01710-87. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item four is second reading on ordinance number 01711-90. Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $100,000 for outsourcing certain electrical inspections. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance number 01711-90. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. Item number five is first reading on ordinance number 01711-89, and Vice Mayor Overton is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This order is appropriating $455,047.99 for the purchase of a fire engine. I so move to get it on the floor.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilman Alexander, and opens the floor for discussion.
I need to disclose that my son is a Gallatin firefighter, although this will not have anything to do with his conflict eventual.
Mayor, I would like to ask that we defer this until the last work session in February. Hopefully, we'll have time to see where all the bids and stuff are. I want to support this, but I can't at this time, but I'd love to put this off until the second work session in February so we can support it and move on. And second question is, second question is, do we have what we asked for from last week? Do we have, do we have the results, if there's any other engines out there that we can be bought, that we're going to furnish us?
The homework assignment that I gave Chief Williams, Jim, if you recall, was to have it by the work study between first and second reading. For consideration, that I know at least must, two council people asked him to also consider options, because it's a long way between, as far as my first and second vote, you know, there's still a ways to go, but at least he gets it down to a point where we can up, down, defer, or adjust to something that is more economically feasible for the city.
Okay, I think we have a motion to defer, but I think Mr. Mayberry is saying that he'd prefer not to do that, so is, at this point, would it be proper to ask for a second on the motion to defer?
I'll second that, but I do support purchases of a fire engine. I just think that I'd like to move it out into the table room to discuss the options.
That's correct.
Okay. But you do have the option to go ahead and vote on first reading, and then, well, we'll do, deal with the motion to defer first. So, the motion to defer, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
I think I had four in favor of deferring, Camp, Love, Fennell, and Hayes. Is that correct? All four of you in favor of deferring?
That's correct.
Or five? It would be one, yeah, it would be five in favor of deferring and two in favor of not deferring. So, that means it is deferred.
To the second work session.
To the second work session in January?
February.
In February.
Yes, ma'am.
And what's the point for deferring?
So, we'll have these bids and everything back hopefully on the road and stuff by then, so we'll know what it's going to cost us.
So, that is February 27.
And we'll have this information, yes.
What are we waiting for on bids on?
Hand-tracks.
We waiting for bids on hand-tracks for the fire truck? I mean, I'm just trying to get clarification, that's all.
Thank God.
I'm not sure I understand either what we're, why are we waiting?
Okay, there was a motion, and you all voted to defer it to February. I don't think that, I'm not sure that it's proper to discuss it at this point unless someone wants to make a motion to put it back on tonight's agenda, and I don't even.
You'd have to have a motion to reconsider.
Well, I'll make a motion to reconsider, so we can talk about it, because I don't.
You can't.
You didn't vote in favor of it. Someone that voted in favor of it would have to have, would have to move to reconsider.
All right, I'll move to reconsider.
Okay, we have a motion to reconsider what was just approved.
Chief, have you already met with some council members that next Tuesday night, there would not have been any optional numbers on a fire truck? Are you going, were you going to have new numbers, optional numbers, next Tuesday night?
Councilman Mayberry, I want to interrupt you and go back to the motion to reconsider. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to reconsider that deferral to February 27. At this point, we can vote on that motion, so I would say, unless anyone wants to discuss before we vote, reconsidering delaying it until February 27.
That's already passed.
We're reconsidering it.
We voted to defer, now we're reconsidering it. We have a motion and a second, so I'm going to ask that each of you vote by show of hands. All in favor of reconsidering, say aye. Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now I have four and three against, so that means that puts it back on the agenda for discussion, so we are back now at first reading, and.
Yeah, I mean, can I call Chief Williams to the.
Of course.
What's your, what's your feeling on this defer? Do you see a need for that? I mean.
We're undefferred at this point.
Yeah, I know, but I'm trying to find out how you feel about us delaying it, if we vote to delay it.
We just unvoted that.
Okay.
We're back on first reading now.
What's your feeling on it, Chief?
My feeling is we need to go ahead and move forward with this. We've been delaying this repeatedly for, I don't know, seven, eight months now. It started with the delay with the county possibly investing, and it's been delayed and delayed and delayed. We've been trying to build this station for the nearly two years I've been here, and apparently for at least a year and a half prior to me arriving.
Yep. To be clear, this is not about the station.
Station, well, the engine and the station, they're one. They're all together, and we need the engine because we're building the station. So, we need to go ahead and purchase this, because it's going to take us 10 to 12 months, and January is going to put us so far behind in purchasing the station. We'll be prepared long before the engine will arrive, so we need to reconsider that because of the lead time on this engine to construct it.
Mr. Mayberry, I believe you were asking a question before I interrupted.
Yeah. My whole point from last week was, are you, are you going to have any other, because this, you know, if that's a mute thing, then tell me now. Are you going to have, and I think you had directed Cat Ritchie back there to go and search to see if there were any other options as was brought to the table, suggested last Tuesday. Are you going to be able to have some?
Yes, sir. We, we've received some preliminary report for a, an engine that's a muffin engine. We received the report that we can get a demo, but it's only at about a $20,000 saving. So, that's the only report we've received to this point. I know that my chairman of the apparatus committee has a report that he's going to be delivering to me tomorrow, and that's the information I was prepared to share with you guys on Tuesday, like I was asked. I don't know what's all in that report to this, at this time, but I will be prepared to make that report. So, I know that we have that one option. I'm not sure if he's garnered any other information from any other manufacturer at this point.
Okay. Well, I'm, like I said last Tuesday, I'm for voting on first reading. I'm to get it to committee to see if there are any options, and then at the committee meeting, then I'll make, decide, you know, up, down, defer, or, you know, or a viable option right there, okay? But that's what I thought. We at least get it to committee next week.
Okay, is there a motion to purchase fire engine?
I make a motion we'll purchase.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second, and then a deferral, so we're back on the main motion.
That's what I'm saying, is there a motion now on the main motion?
You made the main motion originally, so we're back on the main motion.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question, Vice Mayor. I'm a little, I need to go back to the vote on the deferral. Five to two, who were the two that voted no?
Right here.
Mayberry and Alexander.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That's what I needed.
Yes, ma'am. So, we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor of purchasing the fire engine, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. It passes four to three.
Hayes, Mayberry, and Alexander.
No. No. I voted for it to get it to committee next week.
Sean, Craig, and you. Fennell, Hayes, and Overton.
Got that, Ms. Kitter?
Got it.
Item number six, Councilman Camp.
See, it's going into change.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is first reading of ordinance number 01711-91. Ordinance transferring funds in an amount of $108,290.96 from fire department salaries and benefits to building department salaries and benefits for fire prevention inspectors. So moved.
Motion been made properly.
Motion been made properly, second. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Item number seven, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is first reading on ordinance number 0171192, appropriating funds for completion of infrastructure improvements in faraway hills. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made properly, second, by Mr. Camp. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Item number eight, Mr. Camp, will you take that, please?
Thank you. This is first reading of ordinance number 01711-93. Ordinance appropriating $17,046.01 for revenue saved from insurance of a damaged vehicle. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made properly, second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Pass unanimously. Item number 11, Mr. Fennell.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Overton. This is an ordinance appropriating $65,200, $65,276.62 for the construction of fire station number five. I do support it, and I so move.
Motion been made properly, second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously.
I needed to disclose again that my son is a fire employee, and it does, this has nothing to do with his position.
Item number 12, Mr. Mayberry.
This is first ordinance reading number 01712-97. It's ordinance appropriating $150,000 for bright house market value adjustment. This is moving the employee's retirement plan from where it was to the state, $150,000 right out of the general fund. Motion to approve.
Motion has been made properly, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Mr. Mayberry, would you take item number 13, please?
Absolutely. First reading of ordinance number 01712-99. This is ordinance appropriating $836,000 for the renovation of the Walter Franklin House. Motion to approve.
Motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made properly, second. Any discussion?
What about deferring it till Nick gets here? Well, we're going to move it on to.
Just going to go to another reading.
Okay.
I think we need to look at some options, and I think Nick would help us out with that as far as what we can do to cut costs, so, I mean, if it, we'll probably discuss some in the next committee meeting if Nick's back, and if not, then we've got a little time, so.
Motion has been made properly, second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Item number 14, Councilman Camp.
Thank you. This is Resolution R1711-61, a resolution to amend the Gallatin personnel rules and regulations for light duty. So moved.
Motion has been made properly, second.[1773.01] Motion has been made properly second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Item number fifteen, Mr. Fennell, would you take that, please?
Yes, Jimmy. A resolution to ask the Tennessee General Assembly to exempt the City of Gallatin, Tennessee from the requirements of Tennessee Code Anointed sixty-seven dash four dash fourteen twenty-five and allow the City of Gallatin to levy a tax on the privilege of occupancy of a hotel. I so move.
Second.
Motion has been made properly second, any questions? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Item number sixteen, Councilman Fennell.
This is amendment, amended and reinstated State of Tennessee Deferred Compensation Plan, 401K, Resolution and Participating Employer Agreement. I so move.
Motion has been made properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Item number seventeen, Councilman Mayberry.
Resolution number R one seven one two dash seven five. This is a resolution authorizing an amendment between the City of Gallatin and Tyler Technologies for Doc Origin Software. Motion to approve.
Motion has been made properly second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. We're coming to the agenda, any other business? Anybody like to discuss? Ms. Jamie Ann.
In your package, you have a resolution that's approving a letter that the mayor drafted to T dot outlining the development of our ADA transition plan. I think we need to suspend the rules so that you can approve that resolution, so that we can send that to T dot and just continue on with our outline that we have.
Yeah, you have to suspend the rules because this was not brought at the work session. So you, what you would do is you'd have to have a motion-
Motion has been made by Councilman Mayberry, second by Mr. Kemp, to suspend the rules. Any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We have a resolution number R one seven one two dash seven six. Anybody make a motion on that to approve it? Motion been made by Mr. Mayberry, second by Mr. Kemp. All in favor, resolution number R one seven one two dash seven six. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you, Jamie Ann. Any other business at this time? Any other business?
Can I ask Jamie, Jamie, how, how have we come along? Have we already contracted with, with a third party to go out and make an assessment of all of our ADA needs?
We hired Kim Lee Horn, and we, uh, just had our first ADA liaison internal committee meeting last month, so we should be getting started with that. Depending on whether we should actually see people out and about evaluating our buildings, and we'll keep everyone, um, you know, abreast of what's going on as that time comes. But yes, sir, we have hired the engineering firm.
But they haven't started on-site?
Not on-site yet, except for the meeting that we had with a representative from each department.
How much are we paying then?
Uh, the contract amount was for three hundred and twenty-five thousand, I believe, for the first-
Three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to make an ADA assessment.
And, and to complete a transition plan, and this was supposed to be done twenty-six years ago, so we're behind just a little bit.
Twenty-six years ago.
We're gonna get there, we're gonna get there.
Twenty-six years ago, Mr. Mayberry.
Just another fire truck, that's all.
We're behind twenty-six years. Any other business?
Mr. Overton, I have just a little-
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to say. I received some information today, and this is on, uh, I don't know exactly where this is going, but it's, it was some, a survey done for the Recorder's Office and, and from other cities around. And, uh, I don't know what the plans are. I know you're considering maybe making some changes because, um, next year is an election year. But I just would charge you with that this is just a delicate situation. It's a, it's a, it's a great office, it's always been, uh, this way, and, um, I would just ask that you be very, um, considerate and prayerful, and just to know that where, the direction that we need to go with this. And I don't know where you're headed with this at this time, but I just wanted to let you know, you know, that, um, I would be glad to help, but I also have very strong feelings about it also. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Kithril. Any other business? At this time, we'll move on to public recognition on non-agenda related items. Anybody like to address the council for any other thing? Now's your time. Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion, motion been made properly second, all in favor, say aye. We're adjourned, have a great day.